We have one agenda, one item on the agenda tonight, and that is the Clean Economy Strategy 2.0. So for this, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Katie Buphol-Malice. Katie, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember McGurven. One moment. I was just telling Planning and Development Committee my computer's just running a tad slow. See, apologies. All right. Thumbs up, you can hear me okay and see my screen. Great.
We can hear you. You have a little bit of a robot voice going right now.
A little bit of a robot?
Yeah, kind of like Transformers sounding. I don't know how to put it.
Not sure if that's near the audio, but I'll work on that.
But we can, we can hear you, we can understand you.
Okay.
Katie, can I make one quick suggestion? This happened to me earlier on the Zoom meeting on my computer. I mean, when you hover over your, with the mute button and look at your audio settings, as far as the microphone, do you, is it same as system that's checked? Or the other one?
How is that if I try it without the headset? Does that help?
No. Well, I mean, if it is, what, what fixed it for me was I took it off of same as system and put it on the actual, even though it was the same, playing the same microphone, I put it on the other one, it fixed it, but that's the only bit I have to suggest to it in case you want to quickly troubleshoot, but don't take up too much time.
Yeah, one moment. I apologize. I did hear that earlier today and we had, just being back and forth between the office and home, I think I did just recently change the microphone setting. Let's see if I can fix that.
And if it is just the, the system being laggy or something like I said, we, we can understand you. So I mean, by all means, we can, if this doesn't work, well, we'll stop it through. Just don't play the recording back to yourself unless you want to hear the, the remote voice. I never like how I sound normally playing myself back, so.
Is that, is that better?
Pretty much the same, but let's go forward. Let's just move forward.
Okay. All right. We tried. We tried. Okay, so let's get started. Good evening. My name is Katie Buphol-Malice. I'm a planner in community economic development and co-leading the city's Clean Economy Strategy Update with Linda Knight and Public Works. The main topic on the agenda is the Clean Economy Strategy Update or CES. The goal is to brief counsel tonight on our progress to date as we are about six months into the planning process. But also related to the Clean Economy Strategy Update is we're going to cover the greenhouse gas emissions, community inventory and production targets. And lastly, although it's a separate topic, it's also very closely related. I'll provide a brief update on King County Cities for Climate Action or K4C and specifically the Joint Climate Action Commitments. And we also have some guests with us today, members of the project team from Cascadia Consulting Group and then Rachel Braunbra from King County, who are the real subject matter experts and will be available after the presentation for King A. So from the city of Brenton, Linda Knight and I are co-leading this effort and our long-range planning manager, Angie Mathias, is providing general project oversight and providing special attention to how future policies will be incorporated into the upcoming comprehensive plan update. Our project consultants is Cascadia Consulting Group, as I shared. They are, like I said, the subject matter experts on climate change mitigation and they were actually the same consultants that we used when the city adopted its first Clean Economy Strategy in 2011. We're very fortunate to be able to work with them again. A lot of jurisdictions choose to work with Cascadia because of the work that they do, but it's also very nice for us because we have that continuity consultants working with us in the first go around, but also for our project update. There are lots of individuals from Cascadia working on this project, but today we are joined, I believe, Mary Ann Rosens and Angela Peachman, both from Cascadia. So what is a clean economy strategy? This term comes from the city's first climate mitigation action plan, but it includes the policies and strategies to address climate change and reduce our ecological footprint, but in a way that continues to build on what is a strong economy, right? So we've also described this concept as trying to balance the needs of present and future generations while also taking into account the triple bottom line of economy, community and environment. So I've referenced the original 2011 plan, the Clean Economy Strategy, and its goals were one, to reduce operating costs for both the city and the community through energy saving, resource efficiency, help us better understand greenhouse gas impacts and also identify cost-effective steps to reduce emissions and help save energy. But also it's an opportunity for us to capitalize on opportunities for funding and other investments in the region. And also lastly, identify new initiatives for a competitive and clean local economy. So that original plan from 2011 adopted 22 different recommendations to address elements of a clean economy and advance the project goals that I just shared with you. The update to the plan will build on that foundation from the original planning document, will update and build on the goals and the focus areas, the methodology that was used at the time, lessons that staff has learned and industry experts have learned, and all of those things will continue to guide and inform our work. So the plan that we're working on now in our update will answer questions like, what has changed since we adopted the first plan? And how should the updated plan reflect those changes? What was successful and what needs to be updated from the original plan? Also questions like, what are reasonable greenhouse gas production targets and what policies and programs, actions should we take to reduce emissions in each sector? So now that we have our Clean Economy Process update underway, we are working towards a plan that is implementable. So we want it to be something that both the city and the community can stand behind. And we plan for greater public participation compared to the original plan. You know, looking back on what was done before, there were some interviews with some of the larger businesses, but what we are really shooting for in this go around is more public participation and more input. And we're also, as I mentioned, working on something that can be integrated into the city's comprehensive plan. So on the topic of climate risks and impacts, we are already experiencing these. So the region is expected to see increased temperatures, especially during the summer. Last year, I'm sure as you remember, several Western Washington cities and statewide broke record high temperatures and wildfires and smoke have become increasingly more frequent and severe with wildfire season starting earlier and lasting longer, ultimately reducing winter snowpack. And this makes us, again, more susceptible to wildfires and droughts. But we also have concerns regionally about flooding, so more intense rain events that cause extreme flooding and increased chances for landslide hazards. So why are we updating our original Clean Economy Strategy? There are several reasons for this, some of which I've already talked about a little bit, but a lot has happened in the last decade since the plan was adopted. And this is a time for us to assess where we have made progress, where we might have fallen short and what needs to be updated from the original plan. Also, it's an opportunity to respond to new climate science and data and technological advancements and changes to state climate regulations. Also, public participation. So this is an opportunity to incorporate new ideas from residents and our partners because our population has changed, our economy has changed, and we should have a Clean Economy Strategy that reflects that. And in the last 10 years since the plan was developed, there's even more, a stronger emphasis on building a more inclusive and equitable city. And again, the update strategy should reflect this and prioritize inclusive and equitable community engagement, climate justice, and recognize that those communities that are most frequently impacted by POC or low-income communities, communities of older adults who oftentimes face the highest burdens of pollution, but also unfortunately receive the fewest benefits of clean energy. So this is our timeline. We kicked things off in late 2021 where we met with our interdepartmental team for the very first time. That was to announce that the planning process was underway, review the original plan and discuss our efforts since the original plan was adopted. And then we developed our engagement strategy. We formed a community advisory committee. We started the data collection process for community greenhouse gas emissions and we reviewed local planning documents and state environmental policies, which identified goals, strategies and our actions. And now what we're doing, our current phase, is trying to refine those strategies and actions. And we've incorporated the help of staff. We've reached out to our community advisory committee to get their input and we're also requesting public input at our online open house later this week. And over the, the next several months, we will continue to work on developing the plan and our anticipated plan adoption date is spring 2023. So our citywide participation involvement, so I've said that we wanted to do more than we have in the past. So our interdepartmental team includes representatives from every city department. We have an advisory committee made up of representatives from civic organizations, education sector. Also, we wanted to tap into some of our existing boards and committees and commissions. We have representatives from the development community, folks who are working on current projects in the city, also our local agencies, hospitality sector, and we've also included our engagement plan focus groups. So we've identified wanting to have a youth-specific focus group. If you'll remember, several, well, maybe three years ago, there was a youth group from one of the local high schools at Kansas City Hall that really wanted us to speak out and take action on climate action, climate mitigation. We want to hear more from our community-based organizations, so we'll have targeted outreach to those groups and also from the local business community. So we can hear how, what we're proposing impacts them and with the end goal of developing a plan that they can support and implement. So I'm briefly going to go into introduction of our focused areas, one by one, and some of their associated strategies. The first one is buildings and energy. This one is especially important because it makes up 55% of Brenton's total emissions. And the main way to reduce these emissions and support more climate resilient grid is to try to make the energy we use cleaner. We need to be more renewable, use less energy overall, so just reduce consumption and support renewable energy and community-scale energy projects. Transportation and land use. Transportation makes up 40% of Brenton's emissions and with the majority of those emissions coming from on-road vehicles. So to reduce emissions, we're identifying strategies that reduce the amount of people that drive. So we can do that by supporting walking, biking and transit and maybe disincentivizing driving and encouraging use of cleaner vehicles and fuel and leveraging land use policy, planning to create areas throughout the city where people can find the goods and services that they need by other modes of transportation other than driving.
Katie, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Did you see that 40% of our emissions come from transportation?
Yes. So I have an upcoming slide of something that covers what is our greenhouse gas inventory and it provides some analysis on the, the data there and also have our subject matter experts that can ask, help through questions if you have more, want to know more about the reduction targets and the methodology.
Thank you.
So why, let's see, sorry, consumption and materials management. This one waste only accounts for a small percentage of Brenton's greenhouse gas emissions, but there are emissions from creating transporting and disposing waste outside of Brenton and that Brenton can ultimately help address by working towards more zero waste goals. So for example, to reduce emissions, we might want to keep food and yard waste and organic waste from going to the landfill and releasing methane. Then Brenton can then be more forward-thinking and address emissions from the life cycle of goods and materials. So that might be promoting reuse and repair programs and committing to trying to reduce waste generation. Lots of these things that we're already doing, but what can we do to build upon that work? Water and natural systems. Not only does the city need to reduce greenhouse gas emissions as quickly as possible, but the city can also look for natural areas to absorb carbon and store it out of the atmosphere. So this might look like, again, things that we're already doing, supporting a tree canopy, helping healthy soil to help create more of a sink for creating carbon emissions. This focus area is important in terms of really building our resilience. Both trees and green spaces can help manage water and the related to the changes in rain and snow patterns that I mentioned before, and also providing shade and helping to mitigate extreme heat. There's also other public health benefits associated with this and improving wildlife habitats. And then community resilience and well-being. So planning for community resilience can help the cities support equity and prepare those communities for climate change. We know that hazards in our area are overall increasing, whether it be heat or flooding and smoke. So some priorities might be more in the line of disaster preparedness, others than information and education about climate impacts and how the city and its partners can help and supporting communities that are the most affected by climate change impacts. So to help provide some context and how we got to our strategies, Cascadia led us through a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. The reason we do this is because it helps explain community-wide emissions and we can break it down sector and even by subsector. It's really helpful for setting reduction, greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. Helps us measure our progress over time. And then it also will help inform and help us prioritize the actions that we take so that we are selecting actions that have the greatest impact to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So this is the slide that I had mentioned. I just want to point out a few high-level takeaways. One, energy consumption and on-road transportation, using 2019 data, just want to make that clear, contributed to the largest percentages of total community-wide emissions. Of the 55% of emissions from energy consumption, 40% were from electricity, all 14% were natural gas, 1% were from fuel. And transportation emissions are the largest source of total emissions. On-road vehicles specifically made up of 63% of transportation emissions and aviation emissions made up of 29% and vehicles and other equipment accounted for 8%. The remaining emissions that you see here are those that consist of emissions from wastewater treatment, solid waste generation and, and other use of refrigerants. So I'm now going to transition to discussing the King County Cities for Climate Collaboration and the Joint Climate Action Commitments. Brenton, as, as many of you know, is a 2012 founding member of K4C. The city signed an interlocal agreement with the King County Cities for Climate Collaboration in 2014 and this group has now grown to 20 partners, so including King County and the Port of Seattle and 18 different cities. K4C's climate commitments include pursuing actions across a variety of sectors, including increasing community resilience, fostering relationships with local organizations and businesses, continuing to advocate for strong federal, regional and statewide climate policy. And our relationship with K4C also helps support us when trying to create a united front when it comes to climate-related topics and also makes us stronger candidates when pursuing funding opportunities from the state or federal government. So the initial climate commitments were adopted in 2014, as I mentioned. And this is what the cities had signed on to, kind of their founding words, but it established principles for collaboration. It created sector-specific pathways to achieve CO2 reduction goals and it helps establish shared priorities and actions so that we can make progress towards those goals. So some of the focus areas are very similar to what is in our Clean Economy Strategy, what we're working on and advancing, but renewable energy, clean fuels, transit, green building and government operations. But there's a lot of flexibility for each jurisdiction and how, what actions they decide to take that might have the most impact because although, you know, we have a lot of things in common, we also have our, our differences. And so that's why it's nice to have that flexibility so that we can figure out what works for, for each jurisdiction in terms of trying to meet those reduction targets. In 2019, K4C updated the Joint Climate Action Commitments. And this just really reflected updates to the county emissions inventory and reflects a new analysis of the pathways that were needed to reach different county-wide goals, but also recognizing that each partner may not pursue all actions and will act where it has most impact. Again, noting that we are all have our own unique challenges, but it does give opportunity for each jurisdiction to decide what route they want to take to achieve a common goal. But it also incorporates stronger language around equity, climate justice and transition for workers. So a lot of the same values that are reflected in our Clean Economy Strategy Update. And this has keys. So that these updates with the Joint Climate Action Commitments also reflect public input that K4C has received to go farther and go faster with their greenhouse gas reduction and climate mitigation. So the Clean Economy Strategy 2.0, we are going to base our greenhouse gas mission production targets based on those targets that were also adopted by K4C. So both in action development and in the implementation of the plan. So we have all these actions and we will quantify some of the actions to identify if those actions are going to get us to the targets that we want to reach. So basically modeling out the actions that can take and what the results will yield. So that we know are we, are we going to achieve those emission reductions? The, just in really high level, King County Cities for Climate Action Targets, the goal is to reduce by 50% by 2030, the 75% reduction by 2040 and 95% net zero by 2050. This is all compared to the original 2017 baseline data that King County had collected. So why should we use these K4C action targets for Clean Economy Strategy? As I mentioned before, it's great to have that alignment with King County. It really shows that we are a united front in our climate action efforts. But it also has opportunity for us to stay, to update on what others are working and monitoring our, our collective progress. And it helps us keep pace with the rest of the region and what's happening and opportunity to benefit from shared knowledge from peer cities. K4C, Rachel, quickly, I think we meet once a month. Another meeting scheduled this week. And it's really just an opportunity for us to share what, what's happening with the legislative sessions or opportunities for resources for cities who have already updated their climate plans or are in the process. So there's a lot of information sharing and cross-pollination. And these K4C action, reduction targets are consistent with the Growth Management Climate Council. In fact, I think they are even more progressive than, than Growth Management Planning Council and what is being advanced at the federal level. So how will K4C, how are we going to use these? We're going to use them to set emission reduction goals for Brenton. This is part of our strategy and action plan development and will be used for implementation and tracking our progress over time. So the last time that we tracked our progress in the inventory was in 2009. And so we're comparing the progress we've made over a 10-year period. Hopefully, we'll be able to do this with more frequency. It's not typically something that jurisdictions do annually, but I think with more frequency, with the opportunity to track our, our progress and make changes as needed to ensure that we are meeting our targets. And then before opening up for questions and inviting our guests to speak, I do want to share that we are hosting our online open house. This is our first large public engagement opportunity to have feedback from the larger community. It is scheduled for this coming Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. It will be held virtually on Zoom. In addition to this event, if anyone's not able to make it or wants to provide comments or knows other people that would want to be involved, we also just launched an online community survey and it's available in several languages, Spanish, Chinese, Tagalog and Vietnamese. and Vietnamese. So, if you use the QR code here, that gets you to registration for Wednesday's meeting. But on our website at rentonces.com, you can access the different surveys in the languages that I mentioned. So, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Katie. I see one hand raised already. That's Councilmember Albersen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the slide, given the baseline year 2007 and the the goal by 2030, 2050, that sort of thing. I'm curious, I don't know if I've seen it anywhere, but simple question, where are we now? You know, 50% by 2030, 2035, 2040? And has anyone seen like the data of talking about tracking? Where, whether it be King County or the cities or anything about Renton, I'm curious, percentage-wise? Or it might be?
Katie, I could speak to that briefly, but I think Cascadia might also provide more information. So, Rachel Brumba, the Director of Climate and Energy Initiatives at King County, thanks for having me tonight. Just your response to your question, the last comprehensive inventory that we did uses 2017 data. We are in the process right now and hope to have it completed in literally a couple of weeks for an updated complete inventory and actually Cascadia is our partner on that. And that will be county-wide. We will also have a consumption-based inventory and also individual city inventories for those cities that haven't gone ahead and done their own. I'll just speak to the 2017 data. It was actually, the trajectory was not where we needed it to be. We needed to take substantial action in order to bend that curve down towards the goals. The curve in the last couple of years, obviously with our move towards 95% emission reduction by 2050, the curve is even sharper. So, it indicates that jurisdictions and individual residents and businesses and all of us together need to take even more aggressive action to meet those goals. We'll be sharing, obviously, we'll be sharing that information on the updated inventory out as soon as we get it to all of our K4C partners. I don't know if Cascadia had anything to add on that. I know this wasn't what you were here to talk about, but I know you're well-versed in the topic.
Yeah, I think you covered it really well. They're definitely rising. I'm not sure if Renton had specifically had a 2007 inventory to compare it to, but King County as a whole has been increasing, not quite commensurately with population, but you can kind of use that as a proxy for growth in the region and it's growing a lot. So, to Rachel's point, yes, we're, as a region, not on track yet, but I think part of this comprehensive update is to really figure out what's going on and how the K4C community can join together to take these actions to bring emissions down. And that looks a little bit different for every community, but for the region as a whole, that's a good summary.
Right. Do you have additional questions?
Katie, you mentioned, this is timing-wise, you know, I did a tour of the landfill, Cedar. Cedar landfill. And fascinated to learn, because I had no idea, about the intricate, you know, gas capture network that they have, you know, mainly pulling out a lot of that methane and sending it to whoever you send. But you mentioned in there, you know, to stop some of the organics going there, to stop, you know, GHG from landfill and you mentioned methane. I came away with thinking that, well, they're doing a lot to capture that. Is that considered landfill gases? Is that considered a major issue in this whole? You know, in this whole equation or, because I mean, like, I came away thinking, well, didn't think about it, but that's cool, they got it covered. Can somebody speak to that?
Katie, do you want me to speak to that? I think you mentioned it in your slide, Katie, that solid waste is a relatively very minor source of emissions in the grand scheme of things and for a lot of the reasons you just said, that there are pretty sophisticated capture or conversion to energy processes in place that weren't necessarily around years ago. So, for the in the grand scheme of it, solid waste is a very small part of things, but one way we like to think about solid waste is that it's a cycle, so part of that is the consumption aspect of things. And I think Rachel just mentioned a minute ago that there's also a consumption inventory that goes along with this, so not only are we, you know, throwing things away, but the things we are consuming have a footprint associated with them. So, although solid waste is a really small proportion of emissions, it doesn't take into account all the emissions that went into producing the things that we then throw away. So, I would say to your point, yes, the methane capture can be quite sophisticated and can be help, really help minimize that methane that's actually released out into the atmosphere. And composting is even more effective for the most part at that, at kind of putting, keeping that back in the soil. So, I wouldn't worry about it from like an emission standpoint as much as thinking bigger in terms of consumption and how the things that we buy and use create an additional footprint.
All right. Next over to Councilmember Albersen and then Councilmember.
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention that at our advisory meeting, the whole idea of consumption was called out that because this was done as an update to our 2011 plan, consumption wasn't really considered back then. It's sort of a relatively new concept in terms of climate impact. But, so it's not necessarily in the mix of these numbers and so we're going to kind of go back a little bit and try to capture some of that to add to this data. But when you think about consumption, I mean, when we were on this call, I don't know if you guys remember, but when we were on this call, I was looking outside of my office window and during this particular conversation about the soft cost of consumption, two DHL and UPS truck went by. That's part of consumption as well. So, it's, you know, it's not only the material that's going into what we're buying, it's how we're getting it, how we're using it, and then what are we actually doing with it, you know, with the bagaging and the product at the end of the day. So, consumption is a really big deal.
All right. Councilmember Bear.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So, I would actually like to do a tour as Councilmember Albersen, but like, we'll say it was very interesting. And I understand the waste of only about 5% according to this little chart. I appreciate the presentation, all of the amazing, thank you. And with the Clean Economy Strategy, will we be able to kind of do? Will there be data available regionally to kind of compare? Like, for example, I remember like the city of Renton claims to be like the bicycle capital of like Washington or like King County or whatever, right? And so, like, we would assume that, that perhaps, you know, with how transportation is in Renton, bikes, all of that, that their transportation emissions are less than ours. Now, is there a way to kind of compare that and be like, okay, so then we should be increasing, you know, bicycling and other public transportation? Kind of, kind of get ideas of where we can increase our, your efficiency.
Yeah, I can speak to that one. So, Rachel mentioned earlier that there's an ongoing regional inventory and analysis and as part of that, we're producing what we call wedge analysis. And what that shows is what we think, based on your emissions today and a series of things we use to forecast the future, what are those emissions like in 10 years, 20 years, out to 2050? And then we apply what we think is happening at the state and federal levels and what's going to reduce those emissions. And what we're left with is kind of a nice comparison between jurisdictions of what each one needs to kind of prioritize. And to your point, they do all look different. Some jurisdictions have really clean energy sources, so electricity is kind of not something they're worried about. Some communities don't use natural gas, so they don't have to worry about that either and everyone looks different. So, the tool that will become available through this effort, not only will let you kind of drill into what is happening with Renton, but you can also compare to other peer cities and just see how you're similar or different and how it compares to King County as a whole. So, that tool should be available in the next like month or two. And we're also, as part of this effort, customizing it for Renton and applying some of the local actions that are being considered as well. So, that should help you see both kind of what does Renton look like and then how does that compare to peers or to the region as a whole.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. And then my follow-up that I completely just, I completely just lost my head. I'll get it back maybe eventually. I apologize.
She'll follow, she'll follow.
Thank you so much.
Well, I like the first part about dethroning Renton as the bicycle capital. So, we have these intersection trails, you know, the east rail, like Sound Trail, so I think that's a good goal. Did you remember the follow-up?
I do remember.
All right, go ahead.
So, I saw, you know, we have this goal of like zero net issue by 2050. Is that even possible since we have Boeing? Like, is that ever going to be possible as a whole going for us?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We did, sorry, if I heard you correctly, you said, is that possible because of Boeing, because you have these airline emissions? Yeah. No, that's super challenging, right? Like, the whole region is thinking about that because you don't have direct control over what airlines and airports are doing. So, you're left with fewer levers than you usually have available to you at the local level to make that change. So, I think one of the things that was really riveting through this analysis was seeing what a significant portion of emissions the entire region experiences through not only the airports within your city, but going back to the consumption idea is people in Renton fly out of Sea-Tac too. So, a portion of those emissions are actually attributed to each jurisdiction that's, you know, using or dependent on that airport. The industry as a whole has made a number of commitments and you can put whatever stock in that you would like, but they have a combination of technology and operational advancements that they're kind of banking on. And I think the biggest thing that they're banking on is the sustainable aviation fuels being rolled out like en masse. I think Sea-Tac has made some commitments there as well to advancing that, but I think really working closely with the airports and kind of pushing them on that front. It's an indirect lever for sure, but yeah, I think we're, right now, we're just kind of modeling what the scenario would look like. Given the advancements we think are going to happen regardless of what you do at a local level, and it still does leave kind of a lot on the table. I think technology's changing every day. It's becoming more available, the sustainable aviation fuels, but I just I can't say whether or not they'll be able to create them en masse at the level that would be needed to bring those emissions down to that. I think the other thing that airlines are relying on are offset credits. So, if they can't get their emissions down, they're kind of paying their way out of it to offset those emissions. So, from a greenhouse gas perspective, that's one way of approaching it, but I'm not sure that they're going to be able to organically reduce their emissions on that timeline. So, I think King County realized that as well through this. Rachel, did you?
Yeah, thanks Angela. I just wanted to add tying two threads together, actually, that might be of interest is that you know, first, as Angela said, you know, at the K4C, we have a voice at local governments and so I think if this is a priority, we want to talk about it and bring it about. But the other thing is that the executive's been approached by folks in the industry about taking that methane that comes off of the landfills and the wastewater treatment plants that now we pipe, generally, we either co-gen or we use it for transportation fuel, but potentially in the future to convert it into renewable aircraft fuels or fuels that are for those sectors that are really hard to reach. So, it is a little bit, you know, we need that technology, we need the supply, but it's there and it's something that's definitely of interest to get those sectors down the road. So, it's just something to think about.
Yeah, really great question, certainly on the air travel. And I know that, yeah, technology is hopefully going to catch up, but yeah, we don't know by 2050, so. I had a question and I think it was answered on the first slide, but I just want to ask a more specific variation so that I might have asked something similar to what our council retreat. So, in terms of integrating the Clean Economy Strategy into our plan, well, that, I was asking this because it was, the gauntlet was cast at the last K4C workshop for cities to essentially adopt House Bill 1099 on their own without the legislative requirement. Is this what we're talking about doing essentially?
Sorry, whether or not we're trying to mimic what was proposed in House Bill 1099, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, yes.
So, that's a conversation that has come up at K4C meetings and Rachel probably more meetings that you've been involved in than I have. I think we're looking at components of that, that a lot of jurisdictions I know are interested in and have identified that well, it didn't pass at the state level, but what can we still do to advance that? And I think that a lot of the recommendations and strategies that are in our plan will support that, but we haven't done a comparison side by side of strategies and actions to what is proposed in House Bill 1099. So, just to say, one is not a carbon copy of the other, but I would say that it is in support of a lot of the same strategies and actions. Rachel, is there anything that you would add?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. I'll just be transparent that at the county, we're grappling with that too and, you know, we have a big planning staff and they've begun to figure out what does that mean to go with 1099. First of all, there were a million different versions of the bill. You know, which one do we go with? We're going to go with the conference version that was really one of the strongest. So, we are in that process of mapping out, what do we have now that seem to fit the intent of 1099? And we'll be then starting to do that work to understand, okay, well, where are those gaps? We are also at the K4C, you know, through the dues that each member puts in, we're going to fund a consultant to do just that, to help the, primarily the smaller cities that don't have huge planning staff or just that, or that capacity to be able to develop those elements that align with the K4C joint commitments and craft them out so that, in somewhat of a toolkit, so that jurisdictions could adopt them if they were appropriate for their comprehensive plan, just some of that technical support. We have, we are not on that path yet. We will be working on that in the next couple of months.
Sorry, one other thing I can add to this conversation is just kind of looking at your your previous comprehensive plan and how we developed the initial list of strategies and actions that we're looking at. We started with a review of 12 City of Renton document plans. And one of those was the comprehensive plan to look at strategies and actions to, you know, refine for this planning process as well. So, when you see the list of strategy, when we present the list of strategies and actions to you in the draft plan, you will actually see the thread of, if this came from the comprehensive plan, it'll be linked to the comprehensive plan that you already have currently adopted. So, there's some continuity.
Great, thank you. Additional questions, comments? I am not seeing any, but I generally, I can speak for myself and I think that probably others as well, that we're excited that this update's being done. Certainly, a decade on, it's a certain time and for all the reasons that were given earlier, I think we'll be eagerly looking forward to seeing the product that comes of this work. And I'm thankful for the community involvement, the slide they shared earlier, as far as seeking community input, I think that's really an important step in this process. So, unless there's anything else from anyone else, I want to thank you all for being here today and for the presentation, everything. I'm excited for these next steps, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember McGurgen.
Oh, and I do have a committee report to sign. I shouldn't forget that last part. Which reads, the committee, we're out of practice, we've been so virtual, I'd be like, oh yeah, that's a major report. So, I have a physical paper to sign here. The Committee on the Whole Office Staff Proceed of Clean Economy Strategy 2.0, Planning Effort and Public Practice process. Unless I see any objections from any of the room, I'm going to sign this or virtually sign this report. Seeing none, we're good. All right. And with that, the Committee on the Whole is turned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.